Here.
We have a quorum.
I think she's waiting, yes, as she's waiting in the lobby.
And I think we might have one more join us here in just a minute. While we're doing that, please join me in Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We've got a couple of announcements and recognitions tonight. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 25th, 2025, 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. And at this time, we would like to recognize and honor members of the Thousand Mile Swim Club. The Raton Regional Aquatic Center Swimmers 1000 Mile Club. Number one is Andrew Tapia. Proud Navy veteran, Andrew Tapia began swimming in 2012. Since then, he has made remarkable improvements in his overall health. Andrew swims three times a week and continues to use swimming as a key part of his fitness and wellness routine. Good job, Andrew.
Thank you.
Good job. A little different than Nick and Cole, huh?
It is.
It is, huh, buddy? And then we have Ms. Sue Wortman, a retired schoolteacher from Raton Schools. Sue Wortman increased her swimming time after retiring. She now swims three to four times a week. She credits her time in the pool for helping to improve her overall health and providing valuable physical therapy benefits. Congratulations, Ms. Wortman. And then we have one more, but she was unable to attend. Sarah Lark. Sarah Lark began swimming at the Raton Regional Aquatic Center in 2015 and has since logged an impressive 1,635.7 miles. She has completed an 18K, a 20K, and 25K swims. She raised money for Team Red, White, and Blue, a nonprofit that supports veterans through physical and social activities. And if Andrew and Ms. Wortman would come over here, we've got something for you. We have a little token of our appreciation. A token from the city and a shirt. I'm not sure what the shirt says. Andrew, we didn't recognize you long ago, buddy.
We can't run along there.
Yeah, we are, we are. And I think Marty wants to take a picture here.
Yeah.
Let's squeeze in.
That's good.
Hold your t-shirt up there.
Yeah, that's cool.
That'll be good. All righty, thank you, guys.
Thank you, thank you, city. I appreciate this thing for us.
You bet. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see Commissioner Schuster has joined the party. All right. Okay, next up, we have items from citizens present. If you would like to address the commission, this is your time. We'll give you a few minutes to speak. However, if it's something pertaining to an item on the agenda, please wait till that comes up. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seen none, we'll move on into the business. Item 6A, deliberate and act on approval of the October 28th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. All of you should have had a chance to look at them. If there are no additions or corrections or deletions, minutes will stand approved as presented.
I had one small correction. In my report, it just had something about held a New Mexico Interstate Stream Commission meeting, which should just say discussed. We didn't hold that actual meeting, we just discussed that meeting. And that's third from the bottom up on my, on the first page, third line up.
Okay.
And if we need a motion, so I have a correct, I will
We'll need a motion now to
Make a motion to approve them with that small amendment.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Mark will second. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended minutes. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye. She did, I think she's muted. I saw her mouth say aye.
Motion passes.
Can you unmute, Lyndy?
Hey, item B.
Yeah, I'm on mute. I, I can't see you guys.
We look the same.
You look the same, okay.
Yeah, I don't know how that works, Lyndy. I don't know where the cameras are, if they even have. Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
They were up there a minute ago.
Okay. All right, item B, discussion 2026 Legislative Capital Outlay Priorities. This is discussion only. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a summary regarding the proposed 2026 Legislative Capital Outlay Priorities for the city. This session is provided for your review, ask questions of staff, and provide direction regarding which projects the city should prioritize for submission to the New Mexico Legislature and the capital outlay process. I wish to call your attention to a typo. The Schuler Theater electrical upgrade is $550,000, not $250,000, as is on your list. The list provided is ranked based on the current City of Raton Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan and may be reorganized by the, at the city's discretion. It is recommended that we submit our top three requests and have two alternates due by 2026, beginning a 30-day session. The projects are likely to be funded as, are not likely to be funded as a whole. If the City Commission wishes not to pursue funding for any one of or more of the five, it would probably increase the funding probability for remaining projects. No action is required currently. Staff is seeking your input to finalize the list and prepare the formal request documentation. And so again, number one is the Schuler Theater electrical upgrade for $550,000. Number two is the Raton Animal Shelter replacement for $1 million. Number three is storm drainage repairs for $750,000. Number four is solid waste equipment for $400,000. And five is city building repairs for $1 million. And we've increased these numbers based on inflation.
Yeah. Okay, so those are the top five. Again, this is for discussion. At any time, we can reorder these before we submit. And right now, looking at it, the top three look like the top three that I would back.
I would say the same, those projects look good to me in that order.
Any other comments?
Very much so, yeah. I think the electrical work at the Schuler needs to be at the top. It's, it'll put that building in danger if we don't get it fixed.
Mark?
No, I agree. The order is well thought out.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I would just like to make a comment that, you know, usually we have the Lake Malloy Dam spillway on here. We were notified last week, or two weeks ago. We got 10.8 million for the spillway improvements this year from the Water Trust Board. Might not be, after the allocation, might not be exactly 10.8, but I've been assured it's going to be pretty close to that, so. And we were highly encouraged to apply again next year for more, so.
Good news.
Get it while the getting's good.
Mr. Mayor and Commission, I would also like to recognize Mr. Jason Phillips and Michael Ann Antinucci for helping put this together.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everybody's input is valuable. Any other discussion? All right, we'll move right along. Item C, deliberate and act on event form four, Raton Main Street's Static Light Parade on Historic First Street, November 28th, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is the event application submitted by Raton Main Street for the Static Light Parade on Historic First Street, scheduled for November 28th, 2025, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Staff has reviewed the application, the stadium plan, public safety considerations, and coordinated with city services. The event is proposed to take place in the historic downtown district and will require temporary street closures, traffic control, and coordination with police and Public Works Department. The event supports downtown activities and seasonal community engagement, and the city recommends that you vote in affirmative on this action.
All righty, this is always a cool event to attend. I'm going to ask Brenda or Christine, do you have any comments? I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Because it's always the same question. What time are we lighting the tree?
5:30.
5:30, okay.
That's what I was going to say.
Got it down now, all right.
Because if we light the tree at 5:30, then it's dark enough. And then by the time people start to mosey down onto First Street, then we can have the floats on.
Right on.
Yeah, and the event actually goes till 7:30. I don't know, does that?
That was my typo, sorry.
Okay, so the big goal is 7:30.
I showed him and then, yes.
Then I showed her, right.
But if it's cold, we're going to say, oh, no, no, it was till 7:00. If you know people that you could encourage to put in a float, we, we need lots of floats. And right now, we have one signed up, so, I know. It's two weeks away. I know.
And there's cash prizes.
Oh, there's cash prizes. Yeah, yeah.
Do you guys have like a Facebook post or something I could share?
Raton Main Street's Facebook would have it, yeah. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the event form for Raton Main Street's Static Light Parade on Historic First Street, November 28th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM.
I will second.
We got the seconds and the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries, thank you. Item D, deliberate and act on New Mexico Economic Development Department grant agreement from the Outdoor Recreation Division Outdoor Equity Grant Program. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a draft grant agreement with the New Mexico Economic Development Department Outdoor Recreation Division under the Outdoor Equity Grant Program. The agreement provides funding to the city in the amount of $39,700 to the engagement of youth 18 years and younger in, 18 years and younger in outdoor recreation experiences and with the intent of promoting equitable access to outdoor activities for residents. The terms outline the scope, funding amount, reporting, and compliance obligations are within. Accepting this grant agreement will allow the city to proceed with planned project and leverage external funding for community benefit. And we get to buy all kinds of great stuff with this. Youth BMX bikes, youth road bikes, kayaks, disc golf kits, geocaching kits, safety equipment, pays for outdoor instructors and guides. There's all kinds of great stuff on this grant.
BMX bikes will work great with a pump track, right?
Yeah, which is up and running today.
Oh, wow.
Cool.
Got it up already. I'll have to go check it out.
Yeah.
Cool. Hey, questions or discussion?
Just a question, is this planned to roll out this summer, some of these programs?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion.
I'll move to approve the New Mexico Economic Development Department grant agreement from the Outdoor Division Outdoor Equity Grant Program.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Item E, deliberate and act on New Mexico Animal Welfare Fund Grant Agreement, number 25-J9503-14. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is grant agreement number 25-J9503-14 from the New Mexico Department of Agriculture's Animal Welfare Fund. This grant will provide the city with funding in the amount of $238,169 to support animal shelter and animal control operations to include in renovation of kennels and runs at the animal shelter, such equipment and additional facility improvements. The agreement sets forth responsibilities, eligible costs, deadlines, and compliance metrics. Accepting this grant will enhance the city's ability to manage and deliver animal welfare and control services. The city recommends that you vote in the affirmative on this action. And as you recall, I announced this at the last commission meeting.
Yes, sir. Questions, discussion?
I just had a question, if, I can't, you're going to have to jog my memory. Was there a match on this?
No.
Okay.
Almost wouldn't be my question.
Thank you.
No match required? Commissioner Arnie Field, Commissioner Schuster, any questions?
Nope.
Ki doke.
I will move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on out-of-state travel for Engineering Director Jaden Welch to Golden, Colorado for the Geothermal Solutions Symposium from December 1st, 2025, to December 2nd, 2025. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a travel request for Engineering Director Jaden Welch to attend the Geothermal Solutions Symposium in Golden, Colorado, December 1st through 2nd, 2025. The purpose of this travel is to gain knowledge regarding geothermal technology, systems, and financing opportunities that may benefit the city's infrastructure and sustainability initiatives. The travel will include conference registration, lodging, meals, and transportation, and total is estimated between $330 and $400 in accordance with the city's travel policy. The city recommends you vote in affirmative on this action.
Hey, questions, comments?
I really
I would move to approve.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further questions or comments?
I was just going to say, I very much appreciate the thorough travel justification and supporting documentation.
Any other questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-69. Oops, sorry, item J, I've, I've got ahead of myself. G. Well, let's get way ahead of us. I'm ready to go to the city manager's board. Item G, deliberate and act on out-of-state travel for City Manager Rick Mestes and Engineering Director Jaden Welch to Colorado Springs, Colorado for the 41st Space Symposium from April 12th, 2026 to April 16th, 2026. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, in your packet is a travel request for City Manager Rick Mestes and Engineering Director Jaden Welch to attend the 41st Space Symposium in Colorado Springs, Colorado, April 12th through 16th. This symposium offers an opportunity for municipal leadership to engage with aerospace engineering stakeholders, federal agencies, and technology organizations, which may yield insights or partnerships beneficial to the city's strategic development and regional competitiveness. The cost is $2,560 each. Because this is out-of-state travel by municipal officials, the reimbursement and approval process are governed by per dam act. And this falls in line with some of our economic development initiatives and the state's initiative to build the Space Valley Corridor from Las Cruces, New Mexico, up to Denver.
Questions, comments?
Question, um, is, I just, just like, sorry, I can't, form my thought right now. Will you all have a booth, is, I guess what I'm asking? Or are you just part of like the New Mexico Partnership? Are you, are you networking?
Booths are a little pricey, this is more networking.
So networking, and does the partnership have a booth there?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So, yes, the state of New Mexico had a booth last year, and we expect them to have it again this year.
That's, that's great.
Will they allow us to put in any water information?
On that, to be determined.
Generally, they will. Generally, they will.
Yeah, we're making up literature that we could pass out there, and Cynthia's working on that now.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry, would this, sorry, would this come from economic development funds? Did you say that?
That's right. That's what we're here for. I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Desiree, you can pick.
I've got the
All right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2025-69, authorizing the certification of the City of Raton's capital asset inventory. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commission, I yield to City of Raton Chief of Staff, Ms. Michael Ann Antinucci.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. As you recall, this is an annual requirement, and it's required for our audit. So I'm bringing this to you this evening for your approval of the resolution, which is the certification of the fixed asset inventory. Desiree, I believe, has provided you with my full report. So I've put together a memo for the commission and then also detailed reports of all of the additions and deletions and changes for the year. This past year, RCI consultants who created our database did come in March from the 10th to the 14th. As part of the process, we do enter all of the new capital assets acquired since the completion of the previous year's capital asset inventory into our database, which we call the FAMP. In addition, all assets showing on the disposal listing were removed from the report following the procedures in the City of Raton Fixed Asset Policy. One of the ones you'll see on the disposition list was ambulance earlier in the year that we sold to Vermejo, and the gurney was part of that. So you can take a look at the detailed listing that I've provided. We also do have a large accumulation, once again, of e-waste surplus equipment and vehicles. And so we've been having some discussions about the need to utilize the online public auction site or possibly schedule a local auction using one of the companies listed on the New Mexico State Price Agreement. We definitely have a lot that we can clean up. And it is a bit of a daunting task, but it's been several years since we've actually even had a, a local auction. We also recorded all of the, what we call LIB, land infrastructure and building improvements that were completed in FY '25. Some of our projects that span between two fiscal years are considered what's called construction in progress. And so we keep detailed spreadsheets of those ongoing projects. And then once the project is complete, it gets entered into the database, and the depreciation starts at that time. This report and an electronic copy of our database with capitalization and depreciation reports is provided to our auditors annually and tested for correctness by generally accepted auditing procedures. In addition, per the New Mexico Administrative Code, it is required that the governing bodies certify the inventory and that we are following proper procedures to safeguard all assets by having a complete listing. When I looked at the database today, we have 2,144 inventory items and 664 items that are classified as land improvements and buildings. We will, probably by next month, already be scheduling the dates for the spring visit again from RCI, which generally, we try to tackle that project in March before we start the budget process. If you look at the inventory analysis summary, part of the process that I follow every year is I have to make sure that our ending and beginning balances match for all asset classifications that are 5,000 and above. So you'll see, as of June 30, 2024, and July 1, 2024, those amounts matched. And then after we completed all the additions and deletions with the exclusion of the artwork, because we don't depreciate those items, our capitalization and depreciation reports are still in balance. So the total scheduled values for those asset classifications is $12,917,981.39. And then I didn't give you copies of the depreciation reports, but I do keep a binder with all of the individual departments items. So when we do this in the spring, we generally give the departments their copies so that they can make sure that they can locate the items while the company is here. You will see that in our asset acquisition page, that was the first page after the analysis, we completed a few projects. We did have two phases of the Aquatic Center, which some of those improvements have been ongoing for several years now. But that was the bulk of those two phases that were completed past fiscal year. But we also had some smaller projects, such as the paint, exterior paint at the library. We had some concrete sidewalks and curb and gutter that are on-call. Contract with Archileta completed some of that work. So you can kind of review that. And then when you get into the major asset classifications, you'll see all of the vehicles we purchased. We did have a fairly large purchase this year in the fire department with their breathing apparatus. You'll also see in the disposal, we had approved for Colfax County and Moreno Valley to obtain some of our older equipment, so that will appear on the disposal listing. And then we had a fairly large radio purchase for the fire department as well. So all of those items are listed on the report. Only items by 1,000 and above are calculated for depreciation, but we still do record things such as computers and iPads, cameras, things like that. I stand for any questions?
Any questions or comments?
This represents an amazing, great deal of amount of work, so great job, thank you.
Yes, great work, thank you.
So the auditors, we will be planning additional onsite work. So part of the next phase of the audit will be to focus on capital assets and that single audit that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. I don't have any information as of yet, as far as like doing a contract amendment for the audit, but some of that should be forthcoming. I'm sure the state probably is just waiting to see about the government opening backups, so.
Okay, without opening, a can of worms. RPS, does, RCI does their asset import as well, correct?
So we contract, under one contract, but we have three separate databases. So Water, RPS, and myself track all of our assets separately.
Yeah, this question came up in our last meeting. Apparently, something is not balancing, they can't, they're
Well, I did discover the other day when I called Robin.
I told her to check with you.
Well, I don't think she had uploaded the most current database after the changes were made. So I got with her and Geneva to make sure that they were using the correct, most recent database. And we had discovered, because I, I just barely uploaded mine a couple of weeks ago. But then I found out that Robin hadn't uploaded hers yet. So I had envisioned assist all three entities in making that update.
Cool.
So I'm hoping that might have fixed her problem.
Yeah, she said it'd been there for a little while.
Well, she had made additions into the FY '24 database. Well, she had made additions into the FY '24 database. So, whatever she added, she probably had to re-add after she uploaded the, the newest version.
All right.
So, I suspect that was part of the problem.
Cool. Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-69, authorizing the certification of the City of Ratone's capital asset inventory.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-69. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item I, deliberate an act on Resolution 2025-70, fiscal year 26, budget adjustment number four. Mr. Mestes?
I yield the floor.
Mayor and Commission, kind of a brief budget adjustment report this evening. Previous action at the last meeting was the time clock software. I am gonna put that into the budget. We did find out recently that it could be closer to a 12-month implementation, but hopefully, it occurs in this fiscal year. So, I'm not real sure when, if or when we would have to write the check, but we'll go ahead and put it in the budget for now. The county, we did do a contract this year for the mosquito spray. After we did approve that, I had discovered that they had never invoiced us for last year's. So, last year was 3,000, but this year's contract was five. So, we will write them the check for the 8,000. And then, also, we did have another, I don't know if it's, I guess it was a repair at the airport. We utilized a CES contract with Eden Sales to repair Edmondman Circuit. So, those repairs have been completed. Also, with tonight's action approving the Outdoor Equity Grant, I've included that. I also did make a notation on that particular one. The match will mostly be in-kind, except for the cost of printing and curriculum materials and maps, et cetera. And then, the animal shelter, animal welfare grant, you'll see that one budgeted also. And then, also, under our construction expense and professional services within the gas tax fund, we are currently paying engineering analytics for the North Underpass, South Second Street, and Small Bridge Project. I will reallocate some of their expense once we do open bids here in the coming weeks. And we'll see if there's some additional monies left after the bid opening to pay for some of the engineering costs. I think we kind of knew all along on the Small Bridge Project, there wasn't enough. But for right now, I'll just continue to pay them out of the gas tax, and then, we'll review everything after bids are opened. So, we, hopefully, will be bringing some of those bid awards to you. Probably first meeting in December and possibly after the first of the year.
All right, thank you.
And then, the other one was an action you had previously approved in August for the bulk cold mix. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-70, fiscal year 26, budget adjustment number four.
I'll second.
And motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-70. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Item J, City Manager Report. Mr. Mestes?
Mayor and Commission, bottom line upfront, we will be submitting to you at the next meeting a film permit for a production that will be in Ratone on December 7th. This film will be the first major production filmed in Ratone in several years, and the first major production in decades. Mentioned in dispatches, Taryn Jacomo and Cindy Parker for their work on electronic time tracking that will be presented to all city department ads tomorrow. The treasurer, as you heard, will be, from the next couple of meetings, will be auditing, auditing, auditing. Public Works, the pump track is here, and it's installed?
It's in use as we speak.
It's in use as we speak. This is the first in nearly half a million dollar improvements in the park that we're going through. The police are 70% complete with computer installation in the cars and 100% complete with radios. The fire department, the baby box is currently being installed. That should be up and ready by the next meeting. Engineering will have information regarding the selection of an airport fix base operator by next meeting. Economic Development Director will present at the next meeting on a number of initiatives that have been going on. And finally, a few closing thoughts. Something happened today that has not occurred in 168 years. The United States Mint has ceased production of a coin, and not just any coin, the Lincoln penny is no more. I have a bunch of eggs up here that I got out of my desk. This moment echoes a similar turning point in our nation's history. From 1793 to 1857, the US Mint produced a small copper coin known as the half cent. It was worth five mils or one two-hundredth of a dollar, half the value of a regular penny. At the time, such a coin made perfect sense. A single cent could purchase something meaningful, so even half a cent had genuine buying power. The end of the penny today serves as both a symbolic and practical response to the long reach of inflation and the evolution of our economy. Over time, the value of the US dollar has steadfastly declined, and with it, the penny's usefulness has virtually vanished. I remember when I turned five years old in 1967, my parents decided I was old enough to walk to the corner store on my own. Don't judge them. The only rule was that I had to have at least five cents, because that was the cost of a candy bar in '67. Five pennies could buy you one of these. A full-size candy bar. By the way, this is over $2 today.
Ten cents got you 10 baseball cards and a stick of gum.
Yep. Then today, these will buy you nothing at all. Once capable of purchasing the necessities of daily life, the penny has become a relic, a reminder of how inflation quickly reshapes the way we live, spend, and value our money. And that same force affects our communities as well. Inflation drives up the costs of public services, materials, labor, straining municipal budgets that still have to balance each year. Cities and towns are faced with difficult choices to raise taxes, cut programs, or find new efficiencies in an effort to preserve the quality of life their residents depend on. 232 years for the penny is a good run. While some big cities are not thinking about pennies, here in Ratone, we still count them. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the commission, Commissioner Schuster?
No, thank you for letting me join these teams.
Yep. I believe Commissioner Honeyfield hung up. Okay, Mayor Broteam, any comments?
I'll just wish all our veterans one belated Veterans Day. Hopefully, everybody was able to tell someone special in their life how much we appreciate their service.
I would echo those sentiments. With that, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all.